Resolution number fifteen fifteen. A resolution requiring the administration to enter into immediate discussions with creditors and stakeholders currently on the accounts payable list in order to negotiate a substantially lower amount owed to or arranged payment agreement with said creditors and stakeholders on the city of East Cleveland's accounts payable list and declaring an emergency for the public safety and welfare of the city's residents.
Madam Chair, this is requested...
By council of the whole?
By council of the whole, but it is also sponsored by Councilman Ethel Martin, co-sponsored by the entire council. What say you, Councilman Martin?
Madam President, I just like to say, first of all, I sponsor Resolution number fifteen fifteen and move for its adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded.
Yes, ma'am? Counselor King?
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah.
Counselor Willard?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
Pass your names, please.
Discussion?
Yeah, we bypassed the discussion.
Would you want discussion?
I just wanted to...
He's the sponsor.
Right.
Oh, alright.
I wanted to qualify for the public. You heard our council president say earlier about the options that the state order presented to us. One is talk to our creditors, two is bankrupting, three is merging. We haven't had that conversation as a collective body. We never have had it with the mayor. So what we're doing is responsible thing is saying we're gonna have that conversation. Right now, from what I'm hearing, and I can only speak from my perspective, and that is that most of the people that come in contact do not want to merge. They want to do everything we can in our power to save the city of East Cleveland. It has a great history going way back to John D. Rockefeller and coming up to now. But we have to have those conversations, and it may take a little while, but that's basically the intent is to do the responsible thing. Now, once we've had the conversations, we've had the chance to assess, evaluate, tweak, and tweak whatever the case may be, then we'll know what we need to do. But we just can't go down one lane. We got three lanes we need to explore. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there any more discussion?
Yes. We're here to talk about only the one option being explored. I think those of you who have actually attended a community discussion are well aware that we are exploring multiple options as a community. Secondly, specific to this particular resolution, there is a constant claim made that there is nothing being done in terms of negotiating with these creditors. That is not true. If anyone wants to know, we're certainly happy to invite you into their office and share with you in detail if you wish, or just give you the answer tonight, that we are certainly on a daily basis looking into whether we can reach lower amounts to settle with these creditors. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect...
Thank you. Thank you.
I think my talk was pertaining to this council. There has been no communication with this council, council of the whole. I understand you are out there, like I said, doing what you think you have to do. But the council is a legislative body here. The council is responsible for whatever comes down from you. On your request, we evaluate it, assess it, and either pass it or don't pass it. You have in the past ignored that legislative body, and at the present time, you are still ignoring that legislative body. You may pick and choose or cherry pick throughout the council if someone shows up to one of the meetings. That is alright on your consideration. But the proper way to do business is to sit down with this council and talk to this council about what is necessary to save this city. And when all options are explored and have been explored, we should know what the ultimate is and help produce a solution or resolution. And that is all I'm going to say, and I'm moving right along because we're not going to debate about it. I responded to your response. Madam Chair, clerk call me in a row, please. I'm sorry.
Resolution sixteen.
Moving on down the agenda.
A resolution, resolution number sixteen fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell certain inoperable surplus vehicles through auction to scrap dealers or to sell a complete lot of salvage city vehicles through competitive bidding.
First reading?
Counselor King. Okay, moving right along. Resolution seventeen fifteen, this is the first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sell certain inoperable surplus vehicles through auction to scrap dealers or to sell the complete lot of salvage city vehicles through competitive bidding. First reading. Resolution number eighteen fifteen, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to donate an inoperable lawnmower to the East Cleveland Parks Association.
First reading.
Resolution number nineteen fifteen. A resolution to temporarily suspend the hiring freeze, resolution number one oh one eleven, and authorize the mayor to hire two part-time police officers. The sixteen part-time firefighters will be declaring an emergency for the public welfare, health, and safety.
That's a resolution that has a sponsor, ma'am?
Nineteen fifteen sponsored by Counselor Martin.
Yes, you ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Okay, Madam Chairman, I sponsor resolution number nineteen fifteen and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we moved to second. Discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, I went over it, and Councilman, we would've talked about the police part, so we're helping the police and we're helping the fire to save the money to make the long story short. Thank you.
Talked about this last Thursday at length, and I appreciate the fire department for showing up tonight. The firemen came out last Thursday, and the chief who came out maybe over a month ago kinda went through what was going on with this. So I'm glad that we finally are getting this in a legislative form and we're gonna pass this. I would like to x because I thought it was gonna read a little bit different, and I think if it would help the fire department out better if this legislation as it reads for the fire department could lift the hiring freeze so that the fire department could maintain a part-time pool of twenty-four individuals. Because the problem is, no, no, listen, if they could maintain a part-time pool of twenty-four people because they had a part-time pool that shrunk where people left the pool, and the problem was getting people back into the pool so that the fire department does not have to come back to us and then wait another two months and the city to incur x amount of dollars, can we make this legislation to read to allow them to have a pool of no more than twenty-four, but to maintain a pool of twenty-four people?
I, I, Professor King, I don't know if you can do that. I don't know if you can do that based on the fact that I would have to ask, based on the fact that this is a budget item. And they have been put into the budget based on going through and figuring out, and I would ask the law director if what I'm saying is true. We have to deal with what's in the budget according to the appropriations that has been figured out for x amount of fire and police, and I would like to address... I'm asking the law director.
Well, I'd like to take a stab at it. As Chief Wilcox stated when he was here, he said that they have the budget, and as part of the contract, they're to have x amount of full-time and x amount of part-time. Because they could not increase the pool of part-time people to pull from, they went over budget for those for that period of time where the pool would not allow them to have part-time people. So what we're talking about is simply a pool of people for them to pick, people to work. So it just puts them in the pool. Now, when they work, it will still be under the rules of the contract and within the budget as they set forth. The danger becomes when the pool is so low that they can't get part-time people to come in and therefore have to bring in full-time, the full-time work, and as Nate mentioned earlier, we have to pay them more money, and then they wind up going over their budget. Does that, does that pretty sum that up, Mr. Walker?
You're doing an excellent job.
I just wanted to respond to what my colleague to my right and walked in the back. When I, if you were listening to me, when I made your report, I said a pool of twenty-four part-time firefighters. That was the request. And in my com, and just make this minor correction with Brother King, it was Clark who presented to us. I met with Chief Wilcox one oh one. So I don't think it's a big deal from the standpoint of the bottom line, and I want you to connect with this, and I use one of Old May's words, "coctet" with it, okay? Yes, we're saving the city money. Okay, that's the bottom line, saving the city money. And I want to thank, Madam President, I want to thank the firefighters because, and maybe the mayor too, because they acquiesced in the collective bargaining because they used to have a minimum manning of what was it?
Twelve.
Twelve. So they gave up something so that, you know, we all, we thought we would never get that, but we got that. But I can live with the twenty-four, Brandon King, and I just want to let you know, I followed your directions and I did my homework, okay?
Okay, so the recommendation is that we allow the reading, the wording to be changed or amended to reflect...
Right. Can I say, I moved that we amend, instead of saying sixteen part-time firefighters, we put twenty-four.
To maintain.
To maintain.
A pool.
Okay. Alright, if we can put that in there, I don't think it's gonna make that big a difference. But twenty-four is the key, alright? And...
Wait, wait till you do that. I still, the law director might not be able to speak on according to the mayor's speak on finances, but I'm sure she can speak on language to be corrected or amended in a legislative process that she has put to form. That's all I'm saying, the language. Okay, alright. Then, who's gonna second the amendment? So the amendment will rule, will read as what, Madam... We still gotta read what it's going to... Not quite what you read, but how this amendment and language is going to read.
They want to amend it.
Alright, I'm, 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 a resolution to temporarily suspend the hiring freeze, resolution number one oh one dash eleven, and authorize the mayor to hire two part-time police officers and twenty-four part-time firefighters, to maintain twenty-four part-time firefighters and declaring an emergency for the public welfare, health, and safety.
That's it?
Alright, so we have the amendment made by Councilman Martin and also by Councilman Baker.
Seconded by Baker. So you vote on the amendment, then we vote on the whole thing?
Yes, yes. Well, she's getting it together back there. And would you just calm down? Right.
Yay!
Counselor Baker?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
Counselor Willard?
Yeah.
That has passed the amendment. And do the...
Do the nineteen fifteen as amendment?
Yes. It's still in your court?
Right. A resolution to temporarily suspend nineteen fifteen as amended, okay? Do I need to read this, or I read the whole thing, or just...
She does.
Okay, alright.
Resolution offered by the Jewish...
I hear you.
Resolution number nineteen fifteen is amended. A resolution to temporarily suspend the hiring freeze, resolution number one oh one eleven, and authorize the mayor to hire two part-time police officers and sixteen part-time firefighters, and also allowing the fire department to maintain a pool of twenty-four part-time firefighters and declaring an emergency for the public welfare, health, and safety.
Okay, just, just the twenty-four, the sixteen is eliminated?
Yes.
You want that one, Dave?
Yes.
This was to allow them by this, to hire sixteen right now, and then you said to maintain twenty-four, so you have to have both.
You have to have.
That's why I left that.
Okay, okay.
You're allowing that, this looks the hiring freeze?
Are we correct up here?
Yes, that's correct. We have nine on the department right now, so sixteen of which is forty-five.
Alright, okay.
And then to always maintain a pool of twenty-four, so both have to be in there.
Alright.
Alright, fine.
That's all, break down. Did we, we're going to vote on this?
No, we gotta vote on it, yeah.
Alright, Counselor King?
Yay.
Counselor Martin?
Yay.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah.
Counselor Willard?
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas?
Yeah.
Okay. We have done...
Real good.
As usual. Okay, going back to the public, remarks of the public, three minutes, total five.
Good afternoon, Councilmember, President Thomas. Before I begin, I do have to say, I'm really excited that I came on this day with Coach Spivey. She was hands down the reason that I came to Shaw High School. But I wanted to come here today, my name is Shayla Turner, I'm coming here on behalf of East Cleveland Neighborhood Center and our executive director, Dabby Conwell, because I wanted to explain to council as well as residents the current state of East Cleveland Neighborhood Center and our current actions. When I first began with East Cleveland Neighborhood Center, Councilman Martin made it very clear to me where my job should be, and so I'm unfolding that, and that's why I'm here today. We do a summer program called Freedom Schools, and we've been doing this program for five years. Freedom Schools is a program that's of no cost to the city. We have our own staff, our own curriculum, our own implementation. We were currently, we used to be located inside of the Windermere Methodist Church, and so when we lost the Windermere Church, we lost our permanent home. So the reason that we're coming today is we need to make sure that this program remains in East Cleveland. The program has served over two hundred and seventy students in the four years that we've had it, and this year we're looking to serve another seventy students. And so in order for us to be able to do that, we want to make sure that East Cleveland remains our residence. As many of you know, East Cleveland Neighborhood Center is unfortunately not located in East Cleveland, and so we're looking to really begin to partner with our council and figure out ways and strategies for us to move back into the city because that is very important. We have been very, very fortunate to have the support of both the councils, whereas the mayor's office, and not only our programming, but the implementation of getting us back into the city. And as we look at locations, we have been looking at the Helen S. Brown Center. And so with the Helen S. Brown Center, we'll be able to have the classrooms operate there, provide food, we do breakfast as well as lunch for the students, that as well as no cost to the families, the program is completely free. After the completion of the summer, the program lasts for a total of nine weeks, and afterwards, students leave with twenty books each, so they're all able to start their home libraries. Program focuses on literacy development as well as leadership and community awareness. So we usually do town hall meetings with our students and aware them on different policies that are going on and how to be advocate changes. And so we know that that is also within Councilman Baker's board, so I know that would be a separate conversation to kinda have, but we are coming today to just let you know that we're open to the conversation, and we're really hoping to be proactive before the summer gets here to make sure that we not only ensure a summer house for our programming, but also begin to have conversations of how to get East Cleveland Neighborhood Center back into the community.
Thank you very much.
Old May's, it's at the Rockville Road. I'm here in reference to the bid process, if there were a bid, and I have no one have addressed as to whether it went out according to the ordinance, which you are to follow, the administration is to follow those ordinance that's passed by this council, or any ordinance because you raise your right hand, say you would follow the ordinance and the charter of the city of East Cleveland. So I want you to follow it because you know people have gone to jail not following the ordinance and doing things that's not right. So I want to know where the bids are, if there were any bids, or whether circulated in the paper, what your ordinance requires is here, and in the paper of circulation in the city of East Cleveland. And I'm gonna say this, I'm quoting the charter. The charter says the mayor must be at all meetings, respond, participate, and what have you, all meetings. And the designated is, since he made mention of the designated, is the law director, the finance director, and the service director must be here, one of the others, and to respond. The mayor is not, it's totally disrespectful to the position of the mayor to get up and walk out of meetings, and today he is staying, and I'm glad to know that he is staying today to hear what the citizens, we of the city... Now, you walking out or whatever, your job is to be here, that's derelict a responsibility. Derelict. That's what the charter says. I'm quoting the charter. So you don't like it, change the charter, and only one can change it is us. You must follow. You took an oath to do that. And secondly, it is, I do, in my loquacious, I just cannot fathom seventeen thousand dollars for all of the lot of things. That is ridiculous. Now, if you want the mayor to do some things and you say you can't do it, you can't force him to do it. You passes the law, he must follow and carry it out. That's his responsibility. Secondly, you gonna sell all of these vehicles that we paid thousands of dollars for, and here seventeen thousand dollars. Somebody gonna either wind up going to jail. You, that's city property. No, I'm, I'm just... Seventeen thousand dollars, and next to it, ten thousand dollars. Our new time is up now. Time only ever, if your time gonna be up, somebody gonna go to jail.
Hello, council, mayor. My name's Hank Smith, I live on Mylan Avenue. The reason I came today was to talk about something I've been hearing out here about some things going on with the council and the mayor and the administration. Now, I sat here and listened to the council president talk about how they're not getting any communication between the administration and the council. You know, we talk about how bad the city, how bad a shape the city is in right now. We all know that. I've been living in this city for quite a while, so has a lot of these other residents out here. Now, we saw all of this stuff happening. It didn't start with this administration, it didn't start with this council, it's been happening year after year after year, you know? And one of the main things was because there's no communication between the council and the administration. That's been a problem. That's one of the things, there are so many things that got us here today, but in order to get out of this problem, you got to work together, you gotta have the council, the administration, the business community, and the citizens. We all have to come together now. Now, what I'm hearing out here is a lot of talk about recalling the mayor. Now, this is not the time for that. You know, right now, we're fighting for survival, we're fighting to keep East Cleveland, East Cleveland. Now, now, a disturbance like recall the mayor, this is not this mayor's fault that got us here, it's not the council's fault, but we have to work together now. You know, if we don't come, if we don't start working together, we are, we are gonna fall apart, there's no doubt about it. Well, I just wanted to say that because I got upset because I got a flyer, a recall the mayor flyer from a council member, you know? And that just really, it hurt me inside because that's just telling me that we're not moving forward. When I saw the face of the council change this past election, I had hope. Now, my, I'm losing hope because y'all still not working together. You know, and I sat here, I listened to the council president, she's absolutely right. If the mayor don't communicate with the council, we ain't gonna get nowhere. You know, but that's all I gotta say.
My name is Paul Quinn Baker, I live at thirteen sixty-seven Shawview, I'm the president of that street. You know, East Cleveland got so much history in it. Show you today that lady back there, CNN should be up here. So many great things happen in East Cleveland the outsiders don't know. You got people in East Cleveland don't know. That's, that's, that's bad communication. That's a shame. Channel eight, channel three, they all should be here. Give that woman a hand. The other thing is, I guess y'all get hammered in that. The other thing is, I said about y'all, y'all take this oath, say we're gonna be proud of y'all. Well, they talking about getting rid of the mayor, they need to get a broom and get rid of all of y'all. Y'all is gonna communicate. I mean, it is what it is. We sitting here waiting on y'all. The only thing we keeping in this city is dumb stuff. From outside of East Cleveland, Cleveland hikes, George Ford's daughter got to go. Now, y'all sit around and leave her up there, we gonna come right back here and we gonna get y'all, we'll get another broom. Now, I'm telling you, you here because we believe in y'all. So don't let that stop, we can't do nothing without y'all. We gotta sit and wait and see all this crap. It ain't bad as everybody think it is. It's bad because you got people out here talking the dumb stuff, getting rid of the mayor, it's not gonna help get, who gonna take his place? Martin?
Perhaps.
And then you got people coming here, shouldn't be in here talking, and you know who it is. I don't wanna really put his name out here, but he don't live in East Cleveland no more. Got a bit of center talking, the man with the train. Y'all know the man with the train?
Kelvin Hurdby, one forty-eight, oh, shit, him. Put him out there. Since we already, since we already hot.
Put him out there.
You know who he is. While we already hot. First I want to say, hey, coach, class eighty-nine, we worked it out. We worked it out, I got that out of the question. But I know without you, we wouldn't be each other. Eighty-nine? Alright, we gotta talk about our chuck holes, do we have coal patch, dirt, sand, something to put in these holes? They painful. I mean, we got tears, Hundred Fifty Second, Shaw, Elm, uh, Strathmore. I mean, we need to revamp, resurface. If we selling cars, can we get some cold patch, some service dick? Uh, uh, hold up, hold up, here we go. Uh, we mad about finance. First of all, where's finance director? Y'all shouldn't, we shouldn't be in a hole because the simple fact is finance director should have communicated with everybody sitting up in here. The finance director should be calling all the debtors, creditors, people that's owed, uh, stocks, bonds, whatever's left out there, we should know about it, where it is. And fifteen million dollars for a hospital that ain't there, a parking lot, uh, playground. None of that is developed on that piece of land that should be done. Says community development supervisor is sitting around here in front of me, supervisor. Community development. Development.
She's supposed to be the law director.
I'm talking to the community development guy. Uh, public safety. I look out for my officers. I look out for my firemen. I get mad with y'all. I get mad with all of y'all. I get mad at them more than I get mad at what I'm supposed to be mad about. Because I've been broken into seven times. Seven times. Um, herd money. Do we have any herd money coming up? I got houses that need to be repaired. I got ports that need to be repaired. Paint program, is it one this year? Some of youth program, do we have that this year? Uh, youth corridor money, where'd that go? Yeah, it's a long time. We don't forget. One more thing before I leave here. Remember when you were sitting as council president arguing with Mr. Brewer? You were supposed to make a change. Remember what you said? I can make a change. We asked you to make that change.
Yeah, Charles on one fifty-eight oh eight two. Well, one thing I just said, my friend. It's been a long time since you've been here.
Please. Speak up, Mr. Walker.
Speak up, you can't even.
I thought I spoke too loud. No, but what I didn't really want to say, I came here not to say anything, but listening, I have to say a few words. And I may be standing alone, but I don't think that we gonna survive. Now, the only thing that I see is that we keep trying to scrape a dollar here, fifty cent there, whatever. And you're talking about trying to save a dollar here, a dollar there, trying to survive. Sometime, you could say, on paper, you could say, I'm saving a dollar. But today, but tomorrow it costs you five. Sometime, the cheapest way out is not all the best way. And I think that's one of the big reasons that we in the position that we in now. Promising people stuck and people vote for people that they say, we can do this and we can do that and can't do it because the money is not there. So I don't see no money there. Well, I am not in the chair to speak of where the money is. But from my thinking, and always have been, whoever been sitting in that chair, they always didn't seem to communicate with the other people that didn't know about the money circulation. And the money always comes up short. And I don't see, they said three options. I don't see none of what? None of it. Because we ain't the only place. Cleveland Heights having a problem. University Heights having problems. You know, the money is, people don't understand. When you at the bottom, other people can drop down and you keep going down, not going up. Only way that they can survive, y'all say if you wanna save the city of East Cleveland, you gonna have to pay for it. Who up here wanna triple a tax? I don't think nobody in here wanna do that. So you got to the point where this is the only thing gonna survive. That's all, I wanna, if anybody up here could just come up with a concrete plan to save this city, I wanna hear it. I haven't heard anybody saying anything about really being survived. And I don't see it coming.
Good evening, Tammy Lee. Uh, you guys, you guys, um, I'm listening to everybody constantly, uh, talking about the issues here in East Cleveland. You know, it seems like it's going out one ear and not the other. I've been observing since I've been here. And, um, one thing I'm gonna elaborate on, it is somebody's fault in this city the way the, the finances are here. It is not our fault as the residents. We have tried to support, you know, and wait and see what's gonna happen. Um, and another thing about those police cars, you know, it's, uh, mind-boggling that I seen five police cars in the, uh, junk or wherever that is y'all gathered with. Those were thirty thousand dollar cars, each one of them. I remember when they brought that car and we were up at Helen S. Brown, some of you all know. And they let us look in the inside, those cars were beautiful. Even when officers from Cleveland Heights came down and looked at them. You know, like I said, these attitudes that some of us got, and I ain't gonna call them names, you better change them because you're not hurting us, you're hurting yourself. Because one thing, we not the ones gonna change the city. God gonna change this city because it belongs to him. And if you don't wanna do right, somebody else gonna take it. And like one gentleman, when I was at the, uh, meeting when they had down there with Cleveland, talking about East Cleveland, one black guy, I don't know who he was, but he was from the state. He says, he, if, he, he doesn't care if these residents do wanna eat, keep East Cleveland or they don't. If it does not change, you're gonna lose it. So it's up to you to take a stand and do what y'all supposed to. Have a good night.
Hi, my name is Juanita Galley. I don't know about y'all, Juanita Galley, but this is a curse. And this is not a blessing. And like I said, recalling the mayor is right. And recalling Barbara Thomas wanna be right because I'm picking up my papers today. I mean, we been fighting this over this. Y'all act like little kids sitting up here arguing. The mayor walked out on us like we nothing, y'all. Come on now. And he plays with his little phone and he disrespect us as human beings. And I ain't never seen nothing like this a day of my life. You go downtown, they ain't gonna have this. You go up to Cleveland Heights, they ain't gonna have this nonsense. But if you settle for less, this is what you get. But if you want the best, get them up out of here. And that's all I got to say. And I do need my paperwork because I want the best.
Gladys Falk, one three-three, one nine, Third Avenue. Um, I just wanted to announce that, um, on the May second in Columbus, that's the day, uh, Coach Spivey will be inducted. And I don't think that was announced. I don't think she mentioned that date. So there might be some folks that wanna go down on that date, uh, to the induction. I know I would like to go. And in addition to what she said and all the other things that she's done in the city of East Cleveland, I would just like to speak to her character. She is a Christian woman. You know, and I think that's how she was able to lead all those young people and direct them in, in the path.